Beer Board Meeting Called to Order. Roll Call Please.
Here.
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 Councilman Hatmaker.
Councilman Magnus.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and the approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated November 27, 2023?
So moved.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, we have a request from Galaxy E Smoke Number Five. Owners, Mr. Patidar and Mr. Patel in Knoxville, Tennessee, for a Class B off-site beer permit located at 926 North Charles G Sewers Boulevard. Is there representatives here? Would you like to approach the podium, please? Now, is this the old Pizza Hut building?
Uh, no, it's the Aaron's for this place.
Aaron's, okay. Well, it's fifty-fifty, and I guess wrong, so. Now, you're not open yet, are you?
No, we're not.
Okay, alright. Well, just tell us about what your plans are for the building.
So, pretty much, we just acquired the building. We listed, we just bought it last month, and what we're doing is we're gonna add a beer color in there, and so pretty much it's gonna be a convenience store with regular smokes and convenience stores type of setup.
Okay. How many stores do you have?
Uh, we have seven.
Seven?
Not in Clinton, but in Knoxville and surrounding.
Right. Well, I would've known you if you were speaking.
Yeah, of course.
Of course. So, tell me what your process is when somebody's purchasing alcohol?
For what we do?
Yes.
So, okay, pretty much, when somebody's trying to purchase an alcohol, so we have a P O system where we have to scan an ID. It does, it kind of tells if they're over age or not age, and we identify, like, you know, we look at the ID and make sure everything is processed. And Knox County, you know, we have to get a beer permit separate. Individual person has to get a beer permit, so.
So you take IDs for everyone regardless?
Yes. So we have a P O system that tells years of no.
Okay.
So there is no gas or if some parts.
Does that type of system make you, like, scan an ID for that transaction to proceed?
Exactly. So when you scan a beer, it asks for the birth date, so you have to punch in the actual birth date, whatever the birth date is, you have to punch it in. It tells if they're over eighteen, I mean, over twenty-one or not.
Okay. Have y'all had any issues with the other seven stores?
Never got a ticket.
Never got a ticket?
Yes, sir.
Put your out of hand up.
Hundred percent.
Anybody have any questions? While we say this, welcome to Clinton, first of all, but when we do have, we do have beer stings, you know, we kind of check, make sure everybody's doing it. And in the first, we don't, you don't get a buy the first time. You get about a fifteen-hundred-dollar ticket.
Exactly.
And, no, thank you. But, now I'm joking. But, I just wanted to understand, we do take, you know, selling, not to sell under age kids.
Of course, hundred percent.
So. We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome to Clinton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn Beer Board Meeting?
So moved.
Beer Board Meeting is adjourned. Open up the new, the regular meeting. Roll Call Please.
Councilman Quinn.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Councilman Magnus.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Say.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Prayer this evening be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank thee for all thy blessings. It's been a tough time for everybody, and we appreciate, and thank you for your love and care and watch care over us. Thank you for our city employees that have put in endless hours to make us safe, to take care of our needs and responsibilities, and bless them and their families. We know it's been a tough time for them, and we appreciate what they've done. Lead God direct us as we conduct the business of the city. Help us to appreciate those who work around us and what they do daily that sometimes we ignore. Be with us in all we endeavor to do, for in that name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time, we'll recognize any visitors, citizens, like to come and give any praises or one complaint. Great. Communications from the mayor. I do have a few things here. First of all, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council, and also Roger, I mean, he can always include, y'all can pop in if you want to, but I just want to commend Public Works, and y'all did a fantastic job, along with the fire and police. Y'all went overboard as far as just putting in the time and the effort, and I think the results are absolutely the best they could've been. I mean, it was a weird storm. I asked somebody, Mr. Rose on Riverside, I asked him today, because he's been here forever, said, "If you're experiencing a storm like this," because we've had, you know, the big one in ninety-three, he said, "Not like this." I mean, it was so cold after we got all this snow that, you know, you could plow it, then it's just ice, then it's five degrees, so you can put anything on it. It's not going to do anything. And that lasted until probably last night and into this morning, but I want to thank you all. And I know Vaughn, your team is, I mean, I know y'all put the hours in, and Jeff, you two, it's, y'all did a great job, and I just want to publicly thank you all for what y'all do each and every day, especially in times like this.
Can y'all turn this down? This thing's acting a little odd.
Yeah, I think, try to push it back a couple of times.
Push the main game down.
Test. That's good, that's better.
Yeah, I just want to echo what you're saying and give you all a little bit of information, and I definitely want to thank all the departments too, and even Recreation, they pitched in, especially first couple of days in snow removal around City Hall, the community center. We even helped out with the schools a little bit, getting the snow plowed around them, but just some information, Public Works in the, I guess, from Monday morning through Saturday afternoon, they put in, this was every one of their employees, put in on average between eighty-five and ninety hours in those six days of work. I checked with our police department records, from Monday morning at six a.m. to this morning at six a.m., we only had four accidents during that timeframe, which that is, that is fewer than we have when the weather is excellent weather. So one that told me people did take advice and stay off the streets, but even though the roads wasn't the best condition, the Public Works, which we have a snow removal policy that I provided you all a copy of, you know, they try to prioritize what we hit and where we plow first, and then they go from there, which, of course, the flat areas like Riverside, Riverside is low priority because they are flat areas that are easier to drive on. The main roads, the major collectors, the hills, those areas are stuff that the Public Works hit first, and they try to go in that order. Of course, this was a very unusual winter event. We had almost ten inches in some parts of town that it turned to sub-zero weather or temperatures, and stayed that way really through this morning, so it's been a trying time for them. We do not use salt on our streets, and that policy explains why. It's not good for the environment, it's not good for the asphalt, it's not good for the vehicles. We put chips and salt, or chips and sand down on the hills. That's a, we feel that's much better practice. We don't have to come back and repave our roads as often because of it. I was in Knoxville yesterday, and Councilperson Manus was too, and we were talking about how bad the potholes were. Councilman Gann was today, and we were talking about it. There's already cars having flat tires because of it. I mean, the roads are already just terrible because of the salt treatment there. So we try to encourage people to stay home as much as possible, and we give every effort we can to get the roads cleaned as fast as we can. But, once again, I'd like to thank Public Works and the rest of the departments too for the job they did this past week.
Thank you.
Good job.
You should've just spoke. You did a lot better than I did.
There you go.
And, of course, left JB out. I'll hear about that. Also, I have some appointments I didn't do in the December meeting. All of these are reappointments that I have. First of all, the Clinton Housing Authority, I'd like to reappoint Ron Trader, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under the Anderson County Industrial Development Association, Robert Baird, term expired. Like to reappoint him, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in second and third. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under Clinton Recreation Advisory Board, like to reappoint Alvin Taylor and Jennifer Fletcher, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And under Beautification Board, I'd like to reappoint Dudley Bostic, Taylor Hubbleston, Catherine Burbak, Mayor Scott Burton, Molly Farah, and Sam George, term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's all I have here. One more thing. We have some people to recognize this evening that obtained the level of Eagle Scout, and I was called this middle of, first of this, I guess this tour is around Thanksgiving, and I have to, I got, I got caught up in the Christmas activities, and I didn't come to the meeting to present this, which I wish I had of, but I hope you accept my apology. But I'd like to recognize those three today, so guys, meet me at the podium.
Jackson on the phone.
Jackson's on the phone. How you doing?
I'm good.
No, it's fine, that's fine. Just didn't want to say congratulations. So I want to read a letter as far as congratulations on behalf of the mayor and also for city council. You don't put a lot of pressure on me now. "I am writing to extend my warmest congratulations to you on this outstanding achievement of obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. This is a momentous occasion that reflects not only your dedication and hard work, but also your commitment to the values of scouting. Becoming an Eagle Scout is remarkable accomplishment that speaks volumes about your leadership, perseverance, and ability to overcome challenges. Your journey through the ranks of scouting has undoubtedly shaped you into a responsible and resourceful individual, ready to make an impact on the world. I am impressed by the skills you have required, acquired," and I can't believe I did that, I pulled an ET. Turn that phone off. "I am impressed by the skills you have acquired, the service you have rendered to your community, and the leadership you have demonstrated throughout your scouting career. Your commitment to the principles of scouting is truly commendable, and is evident that you embody the scout oath and law in your daily life. This is clearly evident, evidence in your role with the Kern Memorial United Methodist Church in Oak Ridge to organize a closet in their family life center. As you stand at the pinnacle of scouting, take a moment to reflect on the incredible journey you have undertaken. Remember the lessons you have learned, the friendships you have forged, and the positive influence you have had on those around you. Your achievement is not only a testament to your personal growth, but also an inspiration to others within the scouting community. I have no doubt that your journey as an Eagle Scout will continue to shape your character and guide you in future endeavors. May you carry values of scouting with you as you embark on new adventures and new challenges." Once again, congratulations on reaching this significant milestone. Your dedication and achievements make us all proud, and have every confidence that you will continue to soar to new heights in all your future endeavors. Wishing you a lifetime of success and fulfillment as an Eagle Scout. Congratulations. I do want to say, you're part one thirty-one?
Yes.
That's the scout that I was in, and Memorial Methodist Church is the church I go to, so. I was saying earlier to these guys, you know, personally, I have hired, I've hired a lot of people in my past life, and I tell you, one thing that really pops up is being an Eagle Scout. That tells you a whole lot about a person, and what this took for you to get there speaks volumes too. So something you should be proud of. I know your mom and dad are proud of you, and I know the scouts are proud of you too, so thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have there. Community reports, Clinton School Board report. You did make it.
It's good to see people other than my family. It's so nice to be here. We are, we just keep hoping, I keep saying, one more day. I think if we can just do one more day, we'll be good to go. If we just do one more day, we're gonna be good to go. So we're gonna do one more day, and then we're gonna be very, very hopeful that Wednesday is a day that we can, we can get back in school, because we have certainly missed our kids. We are currently, with the closure tomorrow, we are, we will have used seven of our ten snow days, and we put on Facebook, you know, a lot of parents don't realize where snow days come from, so just a quick synopsis of how we get those. The state requires us to have so many instructional minutes in each school day, and we go above and beyond that by thirty minutes extra each day. So we start school fifteen minutes extra in the morning, we go fifteen minutes extra in the afternoon to accumulate what we call thirteen stockpile days. And so we use three of those stockpile days for teacher professional development, and then that leaves us ten stockpile days that we can use for inclement weather or closures for sickness or for flooding or whatever we may need to close for. As you know, one of the things I hate to do most is close Clinton City Schools, and I feel like I've lost a battle with Mother Nature when I have to, when I have to close. So we try not to close very often, but this certainly was justifiable, and we have had to, had to do what we've had to do, but we do miss our children, and we look forward to hopefully coming back on Wednesday. The Commissioner of Education is actually coming to visit Clinton Elementary on Wednesday at ten o'clock, and we are doing a school assembly at ten o'clock in the gym. This is going to be a very special event for Clinton Elementary School and Clinton City and actually our community. I'm not really at liberty to be able to discuss the surprise. It's gonna happen at that assembly, but it's gonna be something that's gonna make a lot of us proud, so if you, your schedules do allow, I would love for you all to be a part of that assembly. At ten o'clock, it'll be about a thirty-minute assembly, and it will be definitely worth your while to come. And then also, I wanted to let you know that Clinton Elementary School is actually up for a national award. We partner with an organization called NIET, which is the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching, and they give away an award nationally to a school each year. Only one school in the nation receives this award, and it comes with a monetary award of fifty thousand dollars. And so we actually have been nominated, Clinton Elementary has been nominated for that award. NIET will actually be on site tomorrow. Some teachers are gonna find their way in to try to do some video footage for this, but then we have been invited to the national conference, and we are one of about four or five schools that have been nominated for this award. So we will find out in February if we are blessed enough to be the recipient of that, but even if we don't win, just to, just to know that they have been nominated for that national award is very prestigious, and we are super proud of the hard work that they do at Clinton Elementary. And then I do want to do a public shout-out to Public Works. I close schools, so I know what it's like to get public comments when everybody is not happy about the weather. Sometimes they take it out on you, but you all take great care of our schools. You all have done a wonderful job, and I just appreciate you adding our schools to your list of many things to have to tackle. And then, last and not, but not least, Jackson Brewer was not able to be with us, but he was the gentleman that was on the phone, but he is a Clinton City Schools alumni, but he actually did his Eagle Project for Clinton City Schools. And so he handmade, designed, and handmade what's called a buddy bench for each of our three schools, and that bench sits on the playground. And the premise to the buddy bench is that when you're feeling lonely or sad, or you don't have anybody to play with on the playground, you go to the buddy bench, and when you see someone sitting at the buddy bench, then you be a good friend, and you go sit beside of them and talk to them. And each one of those buddy benches has been also made in honor of somebody, a student or a staff member that has passed away within Clinton City Schools, and so that's, that's very special, and we are honored that he thought to do his Eagle Project for Clinton City Schools. So any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? Thanks, Kelly.
And we do have a budget amendment today.
Everybody should have Budget Amendment Number Three. Highlights of the Budget Amendment, and the General Purpose School Fund, we're getting a transfer in from a federal projects fund. This is a required transfer to satisfy some requirements of the federal funds. We're taking money out of a federal project, transferring that money into a general purpose school fund, and we have to spend that money in a certain manner in regular ed funds as prescribed by the federal grant. If there's any questions about that, there's some devils in the details, I'd be happy to talk about it. After that, we did have a grant adjustment, and that is reflected in the Budget Amendment in the Federal Projects Fund.
Hear a motion for approval of Budget Number Three?
So moved.
Second.
Budget Amendment Number Three. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roll Call Please.
Councilman Quinn.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Councilman Magnus.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Budget Amendment Number Three passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report. Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals met on January the eighth. The Board of Zoning Appeals, new business Tiffany Schaefer requesting variance for Section three point eight point two point A of zoning ordinance to allow accessory structure in the front yard for property located at four oh six Mariner Point Drive. Lot of discussion about this, and this is an unusually shaped piece of property, and there are, she's, they're dealing with sewer easements, stormwater easements, and TVA restrictions. So based upon all of that, where they have the house, or the accessory structure, is about the only place on their property they could put it. We weren't necessarily crazy about it, but because of the limitations they were dealing with, we felt like there was nothing else that they could've done that, that could've met our requirements, so we voted to approve it. Secondly, applicant Carlos McMurray III requesting a variance to action to Section five point one point B point one in zoning ordinance to allow, by special exception, to have and keep chickens on property under three acres for property located at six eleven Skyline Drive. He's got two point five acres, and he submitted a letter, I think, from everybody on Skyline Drive, and after discussing it with him, we suggested that, because we do have possible pending ordinances involving that, that rather than us make a special decision about a variance, let's wait and see what council did and what other movements might be made, rather than us taking action as far as a special variance. And he, he was, had no problem with that. So that was all with the BZA. The Planning Commission, Thomas Evans requesting final plat review and approval for a property located at seven oh two Block House Valley. The property is Zoned R1, and this item was removed from the agenda due to the owner not wishing to proceed. And then David Crowley requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Wheelwood Drive, property Zoned R1, and this was staff requested this be removed from the consent agenda due to corrections and signatures which had not been submitted, and that, that did take place. And then applicant Anderson County Schools requesting site plan review and approval for property located at Dragon Drive. This is for concession stand, bleachers, dugout, and locker room on the softball field, and this was approved, and I think we threatened Dr. Parrot, thank you, and told him we didn't want to see him again. So it was, it was approved by the Planning Commission. And then amendment proposal to add multifamily residential to B four, and amendment proposal to modify the zoning code section six point two permitted use schedule to add apartments as permitted use in B four, and we voted to defer this, but we only had four of our members there at the meeting, and we felt like this was a significant enough item that we needed to have a full Planning Commission to discuss this before we made any kind of recommendation, and so we voted to defer this till the next month.
Any questions for Larry?
Did we, did the school get their lawsuit, or whatever it was settled with?
Not yet.
It's not yet?
We have to wait till they fully complete the ball field, and once it's completely finished, we have to go back over and retest the lights, make sure there's gonna be no pollution on Mr. Worthington's house, and once all of that's done, and make sure everything's good, then we can settle the case.
Are they working, I guess, toward that direction?
Yes.
To have softball there this spring? You think?
They had put sod down, I think, a week or two before Christmas, I think.
It don't look too good.
And I hadn't been there since a couple of weeks, so.
I don't think they even graded that before they put sod down.
I talked to Dr. Parrot a week or two before Christmas, and he'd asked about the possibility of them using the lakefront park to practice, because I'm sure, I think, well, I think the high school season will probably start in about a week and a half, two weeks, practice at least, so I told him we'd work with him, JB'd work with him, I'll let him use lakefront to practice, so I don't see an issue now. I don't know when, probably mid-March will be their first game, and I know they're trying to get it ready by then. I don't know the time, time schedule though on that.
How long does it usually take sod to take?
Depends on if it's Bermuda or Fescue, and I'm not sure what they put down. If it's Bermuda, this ain't the time of year, you know, Bermuda doesn't start growing till May or June, depending on when, when it gets warm. It needs to be about sixty-five degrees, and at night, sixty-five. So if it's Bermuda, it may take a while. If it's Fescue, it'll probably take off here in March.
Any other questions? No, that's all I had. Other boards?
Green McAdoo, just make note of this, the MLK Day breakfast, the weather got it, the inclement weather, got the breakfast, and I think Adam is looking at a February date to have the MLK breakfast, so it's not canceled, it's just postponed. That is a, if you haven't been to that, that is a very special event, and we have been in the past last little bit coordinating with the Oak Ridge, and it's, it's really been special, so I would encourage you whenever they decide on that date to try to make plans to be there.
Great. Thanks, Larry. General Government Report. Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on the municipal election law. We did meet with MTEST attorneys, and they did inform us that the state election coordinator is allowing the MTEST opinion to stand as the interpretation of the TCA six dash five three one ten, which means that our election procedures will not change this year. So.
Legislature lost.
Moving forward, in accordance with the previous approved practices of the city council, I respectfully request authorization to file for various grant funds through the state and federal government and other agencies as appropriate as we become aware of funding. This would include but not limited funds for building renovations, water and sewer improvements, and rehabilitation, drainage improvements, infrastructure improvements, special programs and projects, vehicles and equipment, and funding for additional employees.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Public safety. Various Anderson County public safety entities are transitioning two-way communication services from their current UHF frequency range to seven hundred and eight hundred megahertz frequency ranges. When this transition is fully implemented, the city of Clinton's public safety responders will not have the capability to monitor or communicate with the other Anderson County agencies unless we upgrade our system. A purchase order was issued last month for twenty-five portable radios to offset a price increase in January. As such, we would request approval of the purchase order to Communication Groups Incorporated in the total amount of one hundred nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This purchase is in accordance with the state contract pricing.
Hear motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. This, for the folks sitting up here might not understand this, this was going to allow, this is just a startup, to get a start, to get them started. There will be no communications with Sheriff's Department, Oak Ridge, there's none now, but this will give us capabilities of being able, this is what everybody's going to, all the volunteer fire departments, everything, so this is something we'll have, we're going to have to do. This is only the start of it, right here. It's something that's going to have to be done, it's very important.
So, is this the first investment we have?
This is the first investment I think the city of Clinton's got to get us started, yes, and it's, it's in the right step, it's the right, the county's already made an investment about a million, two or a million, three, to do with the volunteer fire departments. They use some of their ARC funds to do it, so this is a great, this is, this is a move that has to be, that's going to have to be made eventually.
What do we think the total cost will be when it's all said done?
Just on portables, we probably had to buy two to three times this many, but this will get all the supervisory personnel, and police, and fire, give probably one or two in public works, and a couple in administration, to get them started. Of course, we would have some that if, if, you know, if we sent a crew of guys, like we did to the fire department, back up to the, to the smokies, we'd have enough radios that whole crew could take one and be able to communicate with everybody up there. So, it would get us started, that we would have that communication capability. And then, like Councilman Quinn said, we probably need to buy 15, 20, 25 more next year, and kind of do it in stages instead of one big lump sum.
It's the, it's the right step to do, it's, it's very important, and we're going to have a workshop 911 is, we're going to look at some things, we're looking at some things too, but there's just certain things we can do, and we're doing a workshop in February on this, on this right here, so this is a, this is a big-ticket item, and it, it will be a big-ticket item when we do it. I mean, to do it all at once, it will be, but I agree with what we're doing right now, it's, it has to be done.
Where's this, where's this expenditure, where's it coming from, Roger? Is it coming from capital outlay, or is it coming just from the fund balance?
Fund balance, yeah. This, this was unexpected, the county, I didn't know that we were even going to do it till after the December meeting, and, and county mayor and county EMA director came to me and said, hey, we're getting ready to do this, we, we can get you all a discount if, if we get the order in by January 1st, so that's why we had to go ahead and, and get the approval after the fact. So, I think we got like a 10% discount.
They're hoping there'll be some grants come along, maybe, possibly.
Yeah, possibly. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. The neighborhood traffic calming policy that we had planned on bringing tonight, we had did the final draft about two, two and a half weeks ago, Bill, and sent it to Cannon and Cannon for them to finalize everything and get it back to us. But when the snowstorm hit, they have not been back in their office, so we cannot get the final draft back tonight to, to get to you all to approve. We've sent them emails today trying to get it, but we couldn't, so we'll have it next month. So, one more month, I hope we won't hurt anything, so next month we'll have it back on the agenda. Vehicle purchased. With the recent changes of the Buildings and Codes Department, I will be transferring the codes vehicle that is equipped as a police, police department vehicle to the police department. I'm requesting the approval to purchase two new vehicles for the Buildings and Codes Department from the Tennessee State Contract purchasing price, and the needed equipment in the amount not to exceed $90,000.
Hear motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? What, what type of vehicles are these, the Dodge, or the?
No, these will be Fords, we have a Murphysboro Ford.
So, we try to still work, I know we talk about this every time.
If they had anything they could match, we would. It would probably be F-150, and maybe a small SUV.
I'd at least give them the opportunity to do that, if we can.
Okay.
So. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finance, I defer to Chris.
All right. Thank you, Roger. Short and sweet, we're 50% of the way through the fiscal year. We've met revenues at 45%, and we know that property tax comes in heavy in January and February, so we're looking good there. As far as local option sales tax, we're trending back up. We had those a couple of months where we were down a little bit, probably mainly due to the, the sales tax hiatus on, on food. But we are, we're at 55% of expenditures, so everybody's keeping in check. Fund balance is, is looking good, really no change from, from last month. Going to our sales tax report, we're up about 3, 3 and 1/2% from where we were last year. Again, we were trending down a little bit the last couple of months, but we've, we've actually exceeded now at this point where we were this time last year by about $12,000, so.
But we're down just because of the groceries?
Correct. We were, yeah, but we're still on budget, but those two months, we were below where we were the same time the previous year. Now, we're back, we're back up, and overall for the fiscal year, we're up 12,000 from last year, so.
Good.
I think the governor's already announced that they probably will not do that this coming year, so.
Good. Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, Ridgeview Drive Safety Study. As previously requested by council, our consulting traffic engineer has completed the roadway and traffic study for Ridgeview Drive. I brought you with a copy of this study for review. After staff's evaluation proposal, we'd recommend proceeding with the recommendation for striping and siding improvement at an estimated cost not to exceed $6,000. This funding, funding for this project will be from our current undesignated fund balance.
Hear motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? What I'd, what I'd, Roger and I talked about this a little bit yesterday, is there's, there's more things we could do, this is probably the most cost-effective things, and my suggestion, and we, we agree to, let's do this, and this, monitor the progress of this, and see if it, it helps, and how much it's helped, and all that stuff. Because there's some things on the high end, it's, it's be, be really hard to justify doing. If we can do the things that, that's cost-effective, and, and get the same, reach the same goal, then that's, that, that's where we want to be, so. I just want, for those people listening out there, this is kind of Phase One, and we'd appreciate any feedback. Call Wendy. WendyMannus.com. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Recreation Department, we have advertised and received bids for the resurfacing of the tennis courts at JC Park and Lakefront Park with an alternate bid to convert one tennis court at Lakefront Park into four pickleball courts. After review of the bids received, we recommend accepting the bid package for both locations from Sports Surface Pros LLC at a total cost of $101,500. Funding for this project will come from the Recreation Department's capital outlay budget.
Hear motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion in a second. Any further, any further discussion? What's the timeframe on this?
Barring no more snowstorms, potentially if we get good weather, we might be able to have it done for Tennessee.
Great.
If not, at least we'll have the tennis courts up there cleaned, and that'll be part of the preparation to do them, so. Worst case, it's right after the Tennessee.
Dwight, what's the, what's the timeframe on Ridgeview? I didn't ask that. Is that something we could do on a pre-day?
Yeah, Peyton, just got to have pretty weather, and we've got signs ready to order, so.
Well, I hate to break to you, I talked to Councilperson Mannus before the meeting. According to the Farmers' Island Act, we're, we're due to get two more winter storms, so.
Two more?
Two more.
Like the one we just had? Can she tell me when that is, so I can get out of town?
I can, it's actually in there. I actually told Roger, he shouldn't even turn it over to you.
Well, he made a recommendation to turn it over to JB. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I've got, Mayor. I think that's it.
Any updates on the, the projects you want to cover real quick, the pool and downtown?
Demolition's going, we're having a little struggle with the pool contractor. I did notice a couple of emails come in today on the design. We were having trouble getting that out of him, but I think two or three emails come in. Did you get a chance to look at him, JB?
A little bit.
So, we were, we were having that, so we're, we're debating on, on our next move there. If we can't get him moving forward, do we, do we terminate that contract, go to the next low bidder? So, we'll see where we're at. Like I said, the snowstorm last week kind of got everything slowed down. Hopefully, what he sent in today, like I said, I didn't get a chance to evaluate the emails, they were sent to the architect, and the architect forwarded them to us, so hopefully, hopefully they have the right designs, and we're back on track. But, but the other contractors are moving forward with the project. It's, it's, it's the, the old concession, and locker rooms, and all of that's pretty much gutted inside, so they're moving along with that part of it real, real well.
And the downtown, is that still kind of?
Those plans have been submitted. I talked to one of our consultants last week, and he was going to try to, to see what he could find out, but then I talked to a gentleman today, and pretty much, I think Nashville didn't work any last week, any of the departments down there, so I don't, I don't.
Armory, anything, update on that?
Bill, nothing.
The plans review and specs are going back and forth between the architect and the Boys and Girls Club right now, so it's moving.
Any other questions for Roger?
I appreciate Matt on the house on Greenwood, I mean, not Greenwood, Riverside 417. Let's keep a, keep foot on the gas, so.
I know it's had a water leak this afternoon down there, though.
They've cleaned up, it's cleaned up a lot. Appreciate it.
Anything else for Roger?
That's all I got.
Thanks, Roger. Under first reading of new ordinances, we have ordinance number 683, amending ordinance number 680, zoning code of the city of Clinton, Tennessee. Hear motion for approval?
Sub move. Second.
Hear, motion in a second. Any discussion? Roger, or Matt, do you want to kind of cover?
I'll let my hat go.
Matt, go ahead and cover that.
All right. So, this is essentially the zoning ordinance that needs to be modified to allow future, possibly what, what we're expecting with the future.
Urban chicken ordinance to come through, so that we don't have two conflicting ordinances. We're, we're proposing these five changes to, from a zoning perspective, name the districts at which they are allowed in, and kind of set the groundwork for the municipal ordinance and animal control to come forward for approval next month, as anticipated. So, the five items here are the different places in the zoning ordinance that would have prohibited the, the chicken ordinance from even moving forward, so that's what this is about today.
So, we get through with this ordinance, then the next ordinance would actually be allowing?
Yes, Mayor, the way it would work is, this is first reading of the zoning change. Since both will require two readings, this will be the first reading of the zoning change once we get through tonight. Next month will be the first reading of the proposed chicken ordinance, which I'll share with the Planning Commission next month as well, and it'll be, so it would be the first reading for the chicken ordinance, and a second reading for zoning, so then the second reading for the chicken ordinance will be in March. So, by the time March rolls around, we'll have gone through all the readings, and, and I staggered it like that, so, one, we have some confidence that these zoning ordinances will pass, and then that's when we'll introduce the chicken ordinance in February, and then if that passes, then, then it all, should all be done by the end of March, by the council in March. And the draft has been forwarded to, you know, staff and others to review, but that's when we'll go through it in the February meeting for Plan Commission.
Any, any other questions for Matt?
I don't have no questions, but I'm against the chicken ordinance. I mean, I listened to you guys discuss up here about having horses, and get to three acres, and now we're going to whittle it down and go under the three acres. I, I've just, I don't even go to Food City no more, I'm tired of being jumped about it. I go to Pyle, to get away from it. I'll, I'll say this, to say this, if they want to live in the county and have chickens live in the county, it's not made for the city to have chickens that close. I'm dead set against, I'm a no vote.
The, I've had, people I've talked to too, I mean, the other discussions, I mean, is there any consistent message of why the people are?
Just don't want to live with chickens in their backyard. You just got to think about how close some of these houses are together and have chickens. I'm just, what changes that a year from now, we're not coming back and talking about changing to now, where if you've got a fenced-in backyard, you can have a miniature cow or a miniature horse? I mean, if we keep cutting it down, I, I just, I'm just against, I'm against the chickens.
I respect that.
Matt, is there anything, anything you can talk about, about, I mean, you've done, you've been in two different cities where you've written this ordinance, the pros and cons, and we've talked about it a little bit, but if you can expand on it?
Sure, just for the record, personally, I'm not for or against it, I just responded.
Do you run for office next year or something?
Possibly.
Say a lot of that on TV. You do, you do say a lot of it.
But I, but I do, I do believe that if it's something that the council wants, I want to give them the best possible product. And with that said, there are setback requirements for these lots, so if they can't meet setback requirements, then, then it won't be allowed. There are some, they're not allowed to be raised for commercial purposes, there's no roosters involved, there, there is, the, the proposed ordinance has a limit of six hens per property. The three acres still applies to other parcels that are with the three acre deal, but it also refers to the general farm animals, so it's not just chickens for the three acres, so that's why that stays in place. And the other part would be, is that it's a yearly license, and if there's any violations in a 12-month period, they lose their permit, their ability to, this is in the proposed ordinance, they lose their ability to have chickens if they continue to garner complaints. And, and that's essentially the, the, the cluck of it, so.
The cluck. That's pretty good. I might ask, so I think there's a provision there for adequate, adequate housing.
Say that again?
There's a provision there for adequate housing on the property.
Right, and so, most definitely, they are required, there's a square footage per bird, I'll call it that. There's a square footage requirement for your pen, or your, your, your chicken tractor, or your hen house, if you will, and so, it, it's, it's a simple ordinance, actually, but it does give us the flexibility to manage it, so along with the police department, animal control, and codes, we would be the two general responsible departments to ensure this, that we stay on top of it.
What, Planning Commission, I mean, you made comments about the cities that have adopted this.
I was surprised, I checked Brentwood, Tennessee, Franklin, Tennessee, I mean, some of the cities you wouldn't think have chicken ordinance, have this exact ordinance, pretty much what he's proposing. And I thought Brentwood and Franklin have it, too.
Have other cities noticed more predatory, like coyotes moving into town, or anything like that, on a negative note?
So, as far as the cities I've been involved with, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and Oak Ridge, Tennessee, I've been directly involved in those, and in the codes enforcement role that I've played there, complaints have been very limited, I mean, I'm, I'm just being quite factual about it, there was a lot of naysaying to it, there was a lot of points against it, and they're all valid, but they were points that were brought up prior to adoption, and when it was finally adopted, from a codes perspective, from a codes enforcement, the most complaints we ever received was two or three, but it was mainly because of an errant chick, rooster that was in the mix, because they get them at, at chick age, and you can't really tell the sex of that, or the, the gender, or whatever, you can't tell, and so they grow up, and all of a sudden, they're out there crowing.
We had that happen at our house with four Hs. Out of 11, we ended up with one rooster.
Right, and it does happen.
He was mean.
He's territorial, he's going to be messing with our women.
And it doesn't take long for you to realize you're going to have to find a place for the, for that bird. And so, we haven't, as far as Clinton, I don't know that we're as rural as possibly some of the areas in Oak Ridge, or, but, but that has not been a prominent issue in my experiences. Here in Clinton, I don't know what happens in Clinton, I, I don't know that it's going to be a problem. But it hasn't been a problem that I can tell in Oak Ridge, and it was not a problem in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. not a problem in Cedar Rapids, Iowa.
Any other discussion? Joe, do you want to say something? I know you're pro-chicken.
Yes.
Would you like to say a couple of words? If you need to come to the podium if you want to speak. And just state your name and address, please.
Joe Washington, five-oh-seven Senate Drive. I mean, I've got chickens. I've got six of them, no roosters. We did have some in the bunch. Unfortunately, when you get chickens, you don't know what's going to happen. But we did get rid of them, because that is a nuisance. We wanted to follow the ordinance of, I guess, any sound or anything that could cause a problem with our neighbors. And we donated them to Little Ponderosa Zoo, which I hope the tigers didn't partake in that. I'm not going to go there, so I'll just leave that alone. But our hens, they're quiet, they're just, you know, we've got some dogs in the neighborhood, they're just loud, if not louder. But we have abided by the fence law, the coop, the run, all those things that are necessary in order to keep them protected and to not create that nuisance for our neighbors. And we've also asked our neighbors, you know, how do you feel about this? And they're all fine with it. They've not heard anything except for the roosters that we, again, did get rid of, which that is understandable. But our hens, the six hens, as most counties around us or cities are allowing, we've abided by those things. They're in the backyard, they're fenced in. We're not selling the eggs. I know that's something that's a little bit different, that's, it goes on the agricultural side of things. That's not what our intentions are. They're more or less pets, I guess, at this point. And then, of course, they provide eggs. So I just hope that you guys consider that. We just, again, we're just abiding by those things that you guys require, that we've heard so far. And again, we'll abide by anything that you guys decide from this point on. But I just hope that you allow at least six hens, at least six. Roosters, I understand. They're very annoying. And if we want something outside of that, I, you know, again, we'll, you know, look at maybe moving on to the county, but just, I hope you guys consider at least allowing, you know, what we have so far. Because I know you're aware that most people, a lot of people have those in the city. So, but that's really all I wanted to say, and I thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Any other discussion?
I think that's my biggest thing, is there are a lot of people that they use this for food, and they don't buy their eggs at the grocery store, because when you start studying what, you know, those chickens go through that are mass-produced, it's really not a great thing. And so you get this egg that's not been whitewashed and bleached right from your own backyard. And so it's a way to provide food for your family and not have to go to the store and do that. And so I'm pro-chicken, so I don't see anything wrong with it. And I know a lot of people in Clinton have them, and I've personally not heard any complaints, so.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quinter.
No.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number six-eighty-three passes on the first of two readings. We don't have any more ordinances. Under resolutions, we have resolution number six-eighty-seven. This is the PE Partners Driver Safety Grant. Your motion for approval?
Subway.
Second.
Having motion in a second. Discussion, Roger?
That's just an annual grant. We can get through our liability insurance carrier to, we've done various things with it, to cameras for vehicles, to GPS, I mean, several things. It's just something we apply for every year. It's usually worth from five to ten thousand dollars. I'm not sure the amount this year.
Have we been pretty successful in the past?
Yes.
Every year we get it?
Usually get it.
Right. Any more, any further discussion? You had something else?
Mayor, I think the resolution is eight-thirty-seven.
Oh.
I'm not sure if it was typed wrong.
Well, it had to be, because it says six-eighty-seven.
I don't know who could have been responsible for that, but if you don't mind.
Bill.
Yes.
So we need to make?
Make it eight-thirty-seven.
For the record, yes, please.
That commercial, we got the red flag.
Do we need, was it eight-thirty-seven?
Bill was in the Murphy's Borough last week.
Do we need to do an amendment on that? So just to voice vote. What's that, Bill? So notice, the resolution number, of no fault to my own, is eight-thirty-seven and not six-eighty-seven.
And we made the motion.
Me and Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quinter.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Resolution number eight-thirty-seven passes. Any old business for us? Any new business? Motion to adjourn? Please adjourn.